Can you hear me? Hello out there. Can you hear me? Oh, now you can hear me in the back. Yeah, everybody? Welcome, welcome tonight to our city council meeting, our consolidated agenda. And I just want to thank all of you for coming and thank you for being interested and engaged in our community. And we're going tonight to do a consolidated agenda of the city council, the community development commission, and our Buenos sanitation district, so, which is what we do every night. So to start our meeting, we're going to call it to order, and I will ask the city clerk, Marsha Killian, to do a roll call.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, and I want to thank Pastor Matthew Palm of Hope Church of Nazarene for being with us tonight, and he is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. So if you'll all rise and then remain standing for the invocation.
Shall we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would you bow your head with me as we pray together? Heavenly Father, it is a privilege to be here in this beautiful place. We thank you, Lord, for our young people that are here tonight to engage in the process. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor and for our council, and for the wisdom that they bring, and the tireless effort that they put into our community. I pray that you will bless their decisions tonight. We think of our country tonight, and our men and women in uniform around the world, keep them safe from harm and danger. We also pray for the communities in the Midwest who are being flooded, and all the tragedies that are going on around the world, in Japan and other places that are still recovering. We pray for their safety. We pray that you'd watch over them. As we think of safety, we pray that you would keep our people in our community who ride their bicycles safe. And I also pray for our skateboarders that are here tonight, that they would be safe as they're riding in, as they're involved in the community. We pray, Heavenly Father, as we are here tonight, that you would be with us, guard us, guide us, watch over us, and we pray this in the name of the One who makes Easter possible. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, next, I'll ask our city manager, Rita Geldit, for approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
And today, we didn't, we didn't have a closed session, so I don't need to have our attorney bring us out of it. Is that correct? Okay. And the next thing we're going to do is a presentation, and tonight we have a presentation, a proclamation declaring May 2011 as National Bike Month, and May 20th, 2011, as National Bike to Work Day in the city of Vista. Everyone have to get their helmets out. So I'm going to have Councilmember Gronky read the proclamation.
Okay. Now I have. Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, and Friday, May 20th of 2011 is National Bike to Work Day. Whereas biking is a proven emission-free transportation alternative that reduces traffic congestion, improves mobility, and provides an alternative for driving alone. And whereas promotion for our support of biking to work improves the region's economic prosperity and quality of life. And whereas National Bike Month 2011 is a month-long event from May 1st to May 31st, 2011, which promotes bicycle commuting, safety, and driver awareness of bicycle riders. And whereas Sand Egg is sponsoring National Bike Month and Bike to Work Day with support with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the County of San Diego to recognize biking to work and to promote employer and commuter participation for this day and throughout the year. Whereas San Diego area employers can improve mobility and reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the region and around their work sites by offering incentives to employees to encourage bicycling to work and to, and other alternatives to solo commute. And whereas San Diego area commuters can reduce their weekly solo commute trips and demands placed on the region's roadways by 20 percent by choosing to commute some type of alternative like biking. Now, therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council encourage employers to offer incentives to employees to use alternatives to driving alone, such as biking to work, for this day and throughout the year, and hereby proclaim May 2011 National Bike Month, and Friday, May 1000, May 20th, 2011, as National Bike Day in the city of Vista. And I'm going to present this proclamation to myself.
It could also be a National Bike to School Day. Mr. Maybe, Miss Councilmember Gronky would ride his bike to school, and maybe not. Okay. The next item is our consent calendar, which is several items that are considered just with one vote, without any discussion. And so tonight, items C1 through C10 are on the consent calendar unless the council or public would like to pull and discuss one of the items. And it looks to me like we have item C6 is pulled. Is that the only one? Any, do any of the council want to pull another item?
I'll post C4 if I could, Mayor.
Okay, also C4. So Councilmember Gronky pulling C4, and then also C6. So, any other ones? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to, for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, then the motion is seconded. Everyone, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. So the next item, we will do item C4, appropriation of funds for the junior deputy program. And who is going to, I'm just going to take that. Do you want to report? Would you like to report?
I just want to make a comment about the junior deputy program. I, I think it's a great experience for young people to, to get involved in. I know I talked to the captain earlier today, and he talked about the successes of the program, and the, and the woman that runs the program, or the two women that run the program, do an excellent job. So I know the mayor and I have been to a couple of graduations and seen the young people that get involved. And to me, the important part of this is just the getting young people involved with the, the sheriff's deputies, realizing they're human beings just like them, and that, you know, that you can gain a relationship, create a relationship, and which is good for our community. And so I just wanted to make people aware that we have these types of programs in place. There's another one called the GREAT Program, which is a, an anti-gang program for our young people. And again, it's just an opportunity for the sheriffs to interact with the young people, get to know them, and get to know the community that much better. So I just want to say, thank you for, for the sheriffs providing this for us. And I will make a motion for that item, then.
Okay, and do I have a second? Okay, it's a motion and a second. And interesting, because I've been to a lot of their graduations also, and, and the deputies put the kids through exercise programs, and through, they, you know, have a scene where, you know, a bad thing has occurred, and they have them, you know, look at the evidence that's there, and, and actually involve the parents also. So it's a super program for them. So I guess we're ready to vote. And that motion passes unanimously. The next item is item C6, which is the revised 2009 through 2014 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and the 2011-12 Annual Action Plan. And so we're going to, are we going to have a report? Do you want to report?
I'm okay with that, the report.
I'm sorry, yeah, and it's, the speakers, I believe, as the consolidated plan, they're, if they want to speak specifically to one of the programs in here, unless you want to report, it's, it's the same report that you received before with respect to the recommendations, and those have not changed.
So saying, no, they don't need a report. So then will we have, you want to hear the speakers, then?
Yeah, yes, and...
Can we stay for that?
No.
No. Okay, so I have to excuse myself because I have a conflict of interest, and also, who else does? Councilmember Gronky.
Yes, I do.
So we're going to excuse ourselves, and we'll be back.
Yeah.
And so let me give these to John.
And Mayor Portem will be reviewing information from the speakers and addressing those, as well as can take action on item two, the second resolution. Mayor Ritter and Councilman Gronky can return for items, resolutions one and three.
Okay, so we'll do two separate. Let me go ahead and call the first speaker, Krista Vahl. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Krista Vahl, and we are on Velt, Velt Terrace, and our hub site is in 1002 East Grand, and that's in Escondido. And I'm from Palomar Family Counseling Service, and we are in support of the recommendations that the committee is making, and I just want to let you know, we are very grateful, and we thank you for the continued support, and we hope that we will be able to continue to provide services for the youth and family of Vista, and to help strengthen the Vista community. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Reginald Washington.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Reginald Washington, 640 West Lincoln Avenue, Escondido, California, 92026. We come here, thank you guys for, for seeing us. We come here just to say thank you for allowing us to continue support. I actually wanted our kids to be participating in this, and give them that sense of empowerment, that the things that they do, that they are recognized by, by the political process. So I know some of them wanted to say personally, thank you, so I'm going to give them that opportunity, if it's all right.
Sure.
Those who want to say thank you.
Hi, my name is Mitzi Cordova, and I just wanted to say thank you, because you gave me another, this program is like, they're like my family, they're my outlet to all the things that we hold inside, like, to everybody, this program means a lot to each of us, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Which program is it?
From the Inside Out Know Where program. Now, WHERE actually stands for Attitude When Angry and Resolving Emotional Issues Nonviolently. You guys have been supporting us for some years now. We also were able to get another program called the For Girls Only program, and it's more or less like the emotional literacy program, which allows us to have a safe environment for the kids, where they can start working through some of their problems.
Well, thank you for coming, and you're welcome.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, is that it? All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion on the second resolution on C6.
I'll make a motion to approve C6.
Okay, motion and seconded. Please vote. Okay, passes unanimously with Gronky and Ritter, or not, absent, recused, actually. Thank you. Can we get the mayor and Mr. Gronky in?
Okay, so with that business completed, we need to have a motion on parts one and part three. Oh, Councilmember Aguilera, oh, Mayor Portem Aguilera.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Lopez, okay. Everyone, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item, the next item on our calendar tonight is our discussion item, and that is the fiscal year 2010-11 third quarter financial report. And Dale Nielsen will be giving that report to us.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city. Presented to you this evening is the third quarter financial report for the nine months ended March 31st, I'm sorry, yeah, March 31st, 2011. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are in line with budgetary expectations. Exhibit three provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of March 31st. As of March 31st, the general fund has received 59 percent of its total budgeted resources. Keep in mind, there's still a number of large revenue items that we typically get in the fourth quarter. They would include the second half payment of our vehicle and lieu property tax, our April property tax apportionment, which is a large payment to us, and a franchise fee from San Diego Gas and Electric that typically runs about a million dollars. There are also usually a number of items that we will be receiving in July, which relate to items that we have earned in June, so those will be accrued back to June at the end of the year. Exhibit five presents similar information from the expenditure side of things, and coincidentally enough, we're also about 59 percent expended of our total appropriations for expenditures. There are a number of recommended budget adjustment items at this time. They can be found on exhibit two. The first two items listed are general fund items, but they are, one of them is funded by an increase in estimated revenues, and the other one is funded by a use of reserves that were designated for the purpose presented. There's also, you may notice, there's a relatively a large number of capital improvement project budget adjustments being requested at this time, more than you're probably accustomed to seeing. We've gone through the current year capital improvement project, program budget, and we have closed a number of items and cleaned up a number of accounts to basically tidy it all up for the presentation of the upcoming 11-12 CIP budget that's going to be presented to you, I believe, in the next meeting this month. The reso, the budget resolutions to adjust the recommended operating and capital improvement program budgets can be found on exhibits 11, 12, and 13. There's a separate resolution, one for the city, one for the CDC, and one for the Buenos Sanitation District. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do you have any questions, or would you like to hear? I have one speaker. Would you like to hear the speaker first?
Ms. Mayor, council, Chuck Rabel, representing myself, just some comments. If you look at this report going into next year, first of all, the page 16, exhibit six, shows a carryover from last year of 5.3 million, total general fund of 13, 73 million dollars. Of that, and the original appropriations of 66 million dollars, of the 66 million dollars, 62 percent of it is either firemen or deputy sheriffs. When you talk about cutting back on the budget, they can't be sacred cows. You've been playing around with the, a little fee here and a little fee there, and shifting things a little bit, but you're biting at the edges unless you address the payroll cost. Going back to the page 20, exhibit 10, transfer to Propel debt service, which I don't understand, but let's, let's skip over that for now. The last comment deals with page 25, one of the changes to be made, and originally appropriate, the monies that were originally appropriated for the, for the civic center, which is Propel money, to my knowledge. It's not a whole lot of money, but it's got to go into deferred street construction. Yes, you can do it under the ordinance, but I would like Propel monies to be considered dedicated to retiring the bonded debt that these folks have to pay off over the next 20, 26 years, but they didn't have a vote in doing it. It should be strictly pay down the bonds, not used for other purposes through the general fund, although the ordinance says you can do it. To me, it's just not right. It's not fair to them. Thank you much.
Are there any questions from the council? In that case, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the report. A second.
Okay, please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our, thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for that, and then you're actually doing the next one. Our next thing is a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing, and it's levy of assessments for the fiscal year 2011 and 2012. So you going to give us a little, little report?
Yes, Mayor. Once again, my name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city. Before you this evening, we are holding a public hearing that addresses the three assessment districts that we have within the city of Vista. We have a citywide lighting and landscaping district, we have a citywide street maintenance district, and we have a smaller district called the South Melrose Landscape Maintenance District, which covers about 1,100 parcels in the South Melrose area of the city. On March 22nd, the council directed that the engineers' reports be prepared for these three individual districts to analyze the proposed budgeted costs for the upcoming fiscal year, and the apportionment of those costs to the individual parcels within each district. On April 26th, the city council approved the engineers' reports that were prepared and set this evening as the public hearing to set the assessments for the fiscal year 2011 and 12. There are no increases from the prior year due to the limitations of Proposition 218 placed on the city by the voters in 1996. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Do you have questions? We have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first?
Please.
Can you go to hear the speaker?
That was quick. Some comments. If you look at the monies that the general fund are going to put into the landscape and lighting district, they're going to augment by $391,000, the million dollars, and that represents, what you're collecting represents 76 percent of the total. Now, when you, when you address the, let's cut back some of the programs that you sponsor in the recreation and senior area, the guideline was you had to have 70 percent cost recovery. This is no big deal, ladies and gentlemen, and it's something that... This is no big deal, ladies and gentlemen, and it's something that is a no-brainer. I guess you gave up on trying to get a vote on this subject.
We haven't given up.
You haven't given up, and you haven't given up turning off the lights?
No, not yet.
Turning off the lights is still an option?
We're still waiting until, we have, I think, nine or 10 more days.
Turning off, but that's a vote. Then you, then you have to win the vote.
That goes, then it goes to, then it goes to election if we get 2,500 yes votes.
Election by property owners.
Yes.
Understand, that's the process. Turning off the lights is not an option. These folks that skateboard and bicycle, there's no reason to even consider turning off the lights. There's no way, in my mind, that you're going to win a vote. But bless you, I guess. And the other thing I want to mention is that in the, currently, or last year, the redevelopment paid the fees for the districts. Now that you've purchased the properties from redevelopment and they're owned by the city, the city isn't going to contribute to the fees for the districts. And we'll have to see what the numbers are. Now, it's my understanding that there's a pending study by NBS due out at the end of May addressing private streets and whether or not they're assessed properly. I can't tell from the map because there's no zones 1, 2, 3, 4 on the, on the map that was available with the report.
Your light's red.
I'm sorry?
Could you wrap up? Because you have a red, red light there.
Wow, okay. With that, I would suggest that you table this. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gronky.
I'm still confused on this number, you know, this number that we have to subsidize it by. It appears in the paper as one number appears on our agenda as another number. Can you verify the number one more time?
The estimated budget for next year, that the gap is going to be $391,000. And in the proposal from almost a year ago, it says that if 2/3 of the residential lights were turned out, that wouldn't close the $391,000 gap. It, for the 2/3 of the residential lights is about $230,000.
Got it, okay. That helps.
Is that all, is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Lopez.
On, thank you. On this, on the landscaping, we have companies that actually do the work here. Are they local people? Are they out of town, or have they been doing the same thing for years?
We have landscape contractors that work on South Melrose. For specifics on that, I would have to defer to our Public Works Department. I do not know.
Is it the same contractor for years?
No, it's bid at different times. We've had, we have, right now, we're in the middle of a three-year contract.
You're in the middle of a three-year? So, we are going out for bids on this?
Always.
Always. And so, your contracts are for how long? Three years?
Typically, well, it depends on what price we can negotiate, and sometimes if we can keep them at the same level of the contract, we'll, we'll have provisions in there possibly to extend a year if there's no increases. Some of the contracts in the past had inflator clauses. Most of our contracts right now don't. We try to negotiate not to, so we take it out as soon as we think that it's advantageous for us to get better pricing.
Well, I think three years is a long time. I think in the last couple of years, if you had went out for a bid, you'd have probably got some better prices.
Well, we did. We went out to bid last year, where, and so we got a very good price. That's why we went out to bid.
How much less, did you get, much?
Significantly less.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like that's all of our speakers, so I would entertain a motion to close a public hearing and move for approval.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing and take staff recommendations on the four points.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Please cast your votes. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. The next thing on our agenda, our oral communications. And this section provides the public with the opportunity to speak on any item which is not on our agenda. The state law prohibits our City Council from taking action on the items not listed on the agenda, but in order for us to stay on schedule, remember that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and the green light will mean proceed, and the yellow light alerts you that there are 30 seconds left, and then the red light means that your, that your three minutes are up. So, we have, let's see, how many speakers? One, two, three, five. We have six speakers this evening. So, our first speaker, the first one we'll hear from is Catherine, no. Mr. Lopez?
Yes, I just want to say a thing, something. I have to leave in a couple of minutes, but I want to listen to a couple of you, but I just want to let you know that I'm glad you're here today, and I will be leaving, not because I don't want to listen to you, but I have another engagement I have to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then our first speaker will be Catherine Womack.
Good evening, Mayor Judy, and fellow council members. My name is Kat Womack, and I've been a resident of Vista for the last eight years, and I reside at 308
Put it down. There you go.
Avalon Drive, 92084. I'm here tonight as a parent advocate for the building of a skate park in the town of Vista. In the last two and a half months, my son Kyle is skater. My daughter Angelica and I have been, have become personally involved in the cause of seeing a skate park built in this town, along with the many people you see before you're in this room. I would like to say a few words in regards to the site location issue at hand. The building of the skate park needs to be looked at on a whole different level. It is not just a skate park. It will actually become an attraction or a focal point for the city. You'll have plenty of visitors, just like the Wave, Kacorian Theaters, gas and steam engine museums, et cetera, considerations need to be taken. The site needs to be close to public transportation, visibility for spectator activity, vehicle parking, and access needs to be streamlined and assessed. The skate park should be located close to venues where refreshments and foods can be purchased, not in an industrial site or the outskirts of town. I understand that it needs to be built on city properties, so I don't know if the panel can provide us with a list of city properties that we can drive around and look at and perhaps come to an agreement on a location and get the skate park started as soon as possible. Our community deserves it. These kids have been fighting for it. It's a passion. It's an American pastime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Andres Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Andres Hernandez. I'm a local skater here in Vista. I grew up here in the city of Vista my whole life, and as growing up as a kid, I had lots of energy, didn't know what to do with it. And I actually got into some trouble in school. I was like doing bad in school, not doing good, and like my brother gave me a skateboard, and ever since I've been skating, like I've been doing good in school, gotten my grades up, like I started hanging out with good people now, not going down the wrong path. And like, I'm glad to say this right now, and like, but now that we don't have a skate park, it's kind of harder for us to skate in the streets. We can't, we don't have a lot of spots. Like, we're getting tired of getting harassed by like a lot of people. We get neglected, like, get out of here. They don't want us in the streets skating. There's like, they're like, they don't want us nowhere. They're like, they get mad, so skaters are trying to like, they're kind of falling apart now, like, or the community that we always skate with, like, these like falling apart because like, there's no spots no more. We always get tickets. It's like, the skate park, we would appreciate a lot, like, the faster you guys build a skate park for us, it'll be like the best, because like, there's a lot of people in the community like, we need a skate park, because every time we go skating, we don't have nowhere to skate, and like, we have to go to far places, waste gas. And I mean, building a skate park will help, not just you guys, but it will help us, everybody, because I mean, it'll bring more business, like how his mom said, like, attraction, tourists, like tourism will come, like people, more people start coming to City Vista, and like, it'll be nicer and like safer, because like, we're getting tired of skating, like, in the streets, like, it's like being harassed. It'll be more peaceful, we have a skate park. We're going to, we can just go anywhere we want, and it's like, do, have fun, and just make sure like, no one does anything bad in the skate park. Yeah.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alfonso Diaz.
Good afternoon. My name is Alfonso Diaz. So, basically, I live in 206 Townsite, so I've been a local resident here in Vista for a very long time. I started skating like, I don't know, let me see, like, three years ago. So, our skate park here in Vista was just taken away. So, ever since then, I've been skating the streets, and then I've been getting harassed by the cops, getting tickets, you know? And my dad's just worrying about me because he think, he thinks I'm a bad kid. He thinks I'm doing bad stuff, but not really. And if I had a skate park, I would just skate there and not get in trouble at all. My dad would be happy with me, and I'll get good grades. And also, I think how we go skate other cities, and we go like to all these different cities, like San Marcos, Ocean Side, because they have skate parks. So, I'm sure if we had a skate park here in Vista, all those people from San Marcos and Vista will come to our skate park, and we'll have a big attraction in the city. That's like one of my opinions.
Okay.
But, but yeah, like, like my friend Andres said, if we had a skate park, the faster it'd be, the better, because these tickets are too expensive to pay. So, and like we said, we're just like normal kids. We're not into gang activities. We're not doing, we're not doing anything bad. We just want to skateboard, and that's all. And sorry for destroying properties, but, you know, we don't have a skate park. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Nocchendo.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here again for Generation Skate and the ongoing process of trying to get a skate park built here in Vista. We all know this won't be an overnight thing. We all just want to be here to show you guys that we're 100% for it, and we, we just really want a place to skate, and it's like a big passion, and you can see it in everybody's eyes here. And we want a skate park that will be beneficial for not only the city, but the skateboarders alike. We want it to benefit you guys, and we want it to be out in the open and just have like a good vibe, you know? Since the last meeting here that I spoke at, our group has organized a legitimate fundraising group of people, and we've been looking for spots, and our numbers are growing every week. We want this to be a good thing for the whole community, and really want everyone to be involved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elijah Anderson. Did I pronounce it right, Elijah?
Yeah. Did great. Okay, hi again. Elijah Anderson, skater in our city of Vista. Basically here this time to tell you our progress. We know that there's not sufficient funding to just build a skate park, and I want you guys to know that we're not just going to lay around and wait for you guys to provide us with one, you know? We're taking initiative. Things that we're working on, we're spreading awareness to all ages of the community. We're working with the Tony Hawk Foundation and other foundations as well. We're seeking grants. We're expanding our group, so eventually someone in our group will be, you know, a very talented writer and hopefully can, you know, write a grant for us that we qualify for. I recently personally spoke with the fire department, just, and upon their approval, they were very eager to give us their support and had suggestions of their own. We've been surveying land and lots around the city and for possible sites. We're in the process of organizing some fundraisers, maybe some concerts, so perhaps if the city could donate a permit for an event or whatever, whatever you can, in your power you can do would be greatly appreciated. And yeah, like everyone's saying, the sooner the better, and, you know, we're not taking this task lightly, so, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And actually, you know, I've been checking with SDG&E to see, there's that corner lot, and they came back to me, but they, they're still working on it, because apparently there's some security concerns, and they also have, like, I think they said a pipe running through the middle of the lot, but they're, they're still working on it. So, they haven't said, they haven't said no yet, so I'm, I'm still, still hopeful on that. So, I just, you know, I'm, we're not, we're not sitting by either. We're kind of looking also, so. We have one other speaker, Chuck Rabel.
Hi, Chuck Rabel again. I'm sorry I missed a budget meeting or the workshop earlier today. I got in late yesterday on, from a week-long vacation, well-deserved and well-appreciated. On the budget, okay, there needs to be a number of things to be considered, but at, at the top, okay? We, we should have a two-year budget, plan for the, for the worst and hope for better. Don't use one-time monies. Contract out more, such as maybe VizTix, maybe the motor pool out there on, off of East Vista Way. Use more Vista vendors whenever possible. Establish some year-over-year metrics, just like we do in, in industry. And finally, retirement reform. I mentioned earlier, over 60% of the budget is, hell, it must be 80-plus percent is payroll. And today's paper, Union Tribune, we all seen this? Anyway, it compares Jerry Brown's, Governor Brown's plan to change the pensions and the city of San Diego Mayor Jerry Saunders' plan. Now, some time ago, working with the chamber, we came up with a, a, a letter that came to the city that supports the Little Hoover's Commission Reform on Pension. Keeping in mind that the Little Hoover Commission is bipartisan, it came out in late February. It says that the state and local governments cannot solve this problem without addressing the mounting pension obligations of current employees. One thing that's left out of Governor Brown's plan is establishing social, social security benefits to all uncovered employees, a model adapted 25 years ago by the federal government. And at least for new hires, that needs to be the plan. A cap in the $80,000 to $90,000 range of maximum salary that could be used to calculate pension benefits. Anyway, it, it has to be addressed.
I hate to say this, but you had
I'm coming, real quick. Currently, at the CalPERS website, okay, there's a button that you can push that can help you spike your pension. And finally, in closing, Propel passed, the skate park went away, and we owe it to these folks to have a skate park. In my mind, if Fallbrook can have one, why don't we have one here in Vista? Thank you.
The last thing on our agenda are our reports from our City Council and our City Manager and our City Attorney. and our city attorney. So, I think we'll start with Darryl Piper, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing extraordinary to report this evening. Thank you.
Our city manager, Rita Geldert.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The budget workshop earlier this afternoon went well. We still have many issues to deal with, but we are exploring to not make sure that we don't use one-time monies as soon as possible, and we have had a two-year budget in the past, which is, we think, when they downturn the economy and the changes, is the reason we've gone to the one-year. However, we've contracted out a significant number of our operations where it's feasible, and we think that we're making a significant headway. We'll continue to do so. And the redevelopment is still up in the air, as we talked about earlier with the state, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we'll, Councilmember Coles, we'll go with you first. Mayor Prota Maguilera.
Reporting, I have just the Sandag that we talked about, as far as the very low income and low-income housing. We went ahead and made a recommendation that Vista accept the higher number of low-income and very low-income housing in North County, so we're taking the pressure off some of the other cities. And I also made it clear to our two county supervisors that sit on that board that we already have plans for that low-income housing here in Vista, and it's part of our redevelopment area. So, hopefully, the governor cooperates, and his plan doesn't go through. So, that's the only thing I have to report. I did want to make a comment that I attended with Captain Rossell recently at the memorial service for fallen officers here in San Diego County. It was a very moving service, and, you know, makes you really appreciate what, not only the sheriff, but police, customs, all the officers here in San Diego County, what they go through, and possibly what they are actually risking, which is their lives. And we lost two officers last year, and I appreciate Captain Rossell inviting me for that. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gronki.
The only thing I have is, I was reading just recently that Buddy Lewis, the former mayor of Carlsbad, who was a leader within the region for quite a while, lost his wife at 56 years the other night, so I just wanted to say prayers out to him, so.
And also, I would just, the only thing I would like to say is, last Saturday, I participated in a proclamation to the Mormon Helping Hands, and they were, they cleaned, went in and painted and cleaned up all of our parks in Vista, which was, you know, amazing. So, and it's very, very helpful to have volunteers that do that. And I know that North Coast Church this week is doing a weekend of service, and they're actually painting a lot of the schools and some of the city buildings and cleaning up parks and things. So, if you have a heart for service and you see people working, if you want to go join them, you could go do that. So, anyway, that's, I think that's all that I have today. So, with that, we're adjourned.